Well, good evening, everyone. Is this on? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular April meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Statement of compliance is first?
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in local papers on April 8, 2017, and April 9, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district's homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you, and please rise for the salute to the flag.
And Mr. Moffett, the roll call.
Call roll. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
And Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
I do know that Mr. McNamara will be absent today, but Ms. Delara is on her way, so she'll be joining us just as soon as she can. The first order of business is always our student recognitions, and I think we have a couple of presentations too today, so Dr. Johnson, I'll turn it over to you or to...
We'll begin this evening's series of presentations with Mr. Fitzhugh, who will come on down to the podium and do our student recognition, student of the month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Brent Elementary recipient for student of the month for the month of March is Jaden Martinez, first grade student. Jaden was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Prebedudo. The reason for the nomination is for his high level of cooperation, leadership, and is super considerate to others, and has a great attitude and exemplary attendance. Jaden is an outstanding student who always tries his best and he never gives up. Getting his achievements, getting to play at recess is what he is most proud of, but academically, he's excelled in the developmental reading assessment and his math fluency drills this year. We have seen such progress throughout the years with Jaden, as Jaden began at Brent Primary School in September of 2013 as a pre-kindergarten three student. He is a true Brent child who says hello to everyone as he walks around the hallways. What makes this student an asset to the Brent School? Jaden is the school leader, and as the principal, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez states, that she can always count on him to be modeling appropriate behavior and contributing profound ideas to classroom discussions. He is honest, kind, and overall a well-rounded student. She is so proud to have him at Brent Primary School. In his interview with Mr. Prebedudo, he says in his spare time, he likes to play with his toy house and his Ninja Turtles. Now we have to ask, which one's favorite? Which one? Leo? Okay, Leo's his favorite. I've been telling my son Evan that too, because that's my son's favorite as well. He is usually playing with his sister who is three years old. He's an excellent role model for her, and his favorite food is tacos. He likes cheese and meat tacos the most. Orange is his favorite color because it's his dad's favorite color. In school, math is his favorite subject because he loves to add, but Mrs. Prebedudo teaches fun stuff, so he likes all of his classes. He listens well to all of his teachers, and he states when he grows up, he wants to be a pizza maker because he likes pizza almost as much as he likes tacos. Growing up at Brent, Jaden knows all about school rules. However, he believes students should always use your walking feet because it's a rule about safety. He likes the breakfast program most about coming to school. In his quote, "I am so happy to be student of the month. This is really fun." Let's give Jaden a big round of applause from our Hoboken Public Schools family. Our student of the month recipient from Calavero Elementary School, Anthony Lopez. Anthony Lopez is an outstanding student from Miss Alveda's second grade class. He's been chosen to be the Calavero District Student of the Month. Anthony is kind and enthusiastic, and he's a great role model for his peers. He takes great pride in his work and is always looking for a way to help a classroom member out. Anthony attends Passport for Learning daily, where he participates in a Spanish class. He likes to read books about football and superheroes. Anthony enjoys coming to school, and his favorite class is physical education. He really enjoys learning to play new sports. We have to ask, which one is your favorite? Football is your favorite, and what's your team? Red Wings. Oh, he's of the Red Wings. I think that needs a round of applause. Anthony has been on the Hoboken Red Wings Junior Football Team for the last school year. He enjoys playing football with his teammates, and he wants to be a soldier when he grows up because he wants to protect our country. Anthony is quoted as the following: "I like coming to school. I like going to different specials every day." Miss Alveda is quoted as saying, "I'm really proud of how Anthony has grown academically this year." Your principal, Dr. Vespiagnani, states, "Anthony has really thrived this year in second grade, and this recognition is well-deserved." Anthony deserves recognition for being an outstanding student and a great role model for his peers. Congratulations to you, Anthony, for representing Calavero Elementary School and being the district student of the month for March. Keep up the amazing work. Again, congratulations. The March Student of the Month from Thomas Chikonos Elementary School, Pedro Gonzalez, grade six. Ms. Gerson, who nominated Pedro, states that he's an excellent role model for many of the students in grade six. His dedication to his academics is unparalleled, and he comes to school every day eager to learn. He is also willing to help his peers achieve academic success. Pedro is part of the Connors Calavero basketball team that recently won the championship. He also participates in many school productions, like the Hispanic Heritage presentation that the Connors School had at the beginning of the school year. Pedro's hobbies include watching and participating in sports, playing video games, and exploring Hoboken with his mentor in the True Mentors Program. Pedro believes that school is important because school helps students develop into better people, and each day learning something new helps keep our minds fresh. Dr. Pollens, the school principal, describes Pedro as a shining star. He works very hard each day and greets her with sports updates, especially if it pertains to her Philadelphia Eagles. You should have known, right, Pedro? Dr. Pollens feels that Pedro is a kind and caring young man who would do anything to help anyone. When Dr. Pollens thinks of Pedro, she's reminded of a Margaret Mead quote: "Never believe that a few caring people can't change the world, for indeed, that's all who ever have." Pedro is surely someone who has grown up and will change the world. Again, congratulations to Pedro on this distinguishable honor. Congratulations. The Wallace Elementary recipient for student of the month, Naeja Ortiz. The Wallace Elementary School is proud to recognize Naeja Ortiz as the student of the month for March 2017. Naeja was nominated for this award by Mrs. Mazone. I see Mrs. Mazone here this evening, so thank you, thank you. Her second grade teacher, Mrs. Mazone, said that Naeja was nominated for the outstanding character she exemplifies each day in the classroom. The social awareness and maturity she possesses for such a young girl, demonstrating thoughtfulness and compassion for others, sets her apart as an inspiration for all of us to follow. Principal Shannon, your principal states, "Naeja is such a great role model for her classmates. You can't help but notice that when you're around her, whether it's in the classroom or on the playground, she is always doing the right thing. We're willing to say that she is an asset to the school community because she focuses on her studies while at the same time being a great friend to her peers." Naeja comes from a large, loving family where these attributes are cultivated. She shares them effortlessly in her school environment. Naeja has fun being creative with the arts and crafts, and she also loves to read. So we must ask, do you have a favorite book? How was your favorite book? Have to come by Wallace and go read a chapter, okay? Fantastic. She enthusiastically enjoys sharing stories with her classmates, as well as her creative writing stories. Her favorite subject is mathematics because she enjoys doing bar models and solving problems. When Naeja grows up, she wants to be a veterinarian. She loves animals, especially dogs. She was quite a bit surprised when she was chosen to represent Wallace School because you receive the award when you were in kindergarten in Mrs. Alt's class, correct? So I think that is the reason why we should give her a round of applause again, because this is a distinguishable honor for Naeja. Even though it was unexpected, she said she is very proud and excited. When Naeja was asked about winning the award, she said, "I feel proud to be me. I love school. I get through my work without trouble. I also love my sisters, and I try to help them." Mrs. Mazone summed it up perfectly by stating, "Naeja is a sweet young girl who is full of love. This is why she shines." Congratulations, Naeja, for being the March 2017 student of the month recipient from the Wallace Elementary family. Our Hoboken Middle School recipient of the month, Brianna Medina. The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month recipient is Brianna Medina, nominated by Ms. Falcone, your eighth-grade ELA teacher. She states she had the pleasure of getting to know Brianna Medina in her eighth-grade English class this school year. From day one, Brianna comes into the classroom organized, respectful of all students, and just eager to learn. One of your strongest attributes is that she does not hesitate to ask questions, especially when it comes to writing. I know you enjoy those night writes, correct? Time passes so fast. All right, I love that. Brianna is always willing to level up, as Mrs. D. Bernardo states. She takes the time and puts in effort, extra effort, to make sure writing meets the high expectations of all of her classroom teachers. Brianna's maturity also truly shines in the classroom. She does an outstanding job of keeping her group members on track all the while, making sure her grades do not fall. Brianna has maintained an average in Ms. Falcone's age class all school year. I think that's pretty awesome. It is without hesitation that we nominate Brianna Medina for the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for the month of March. At this time, let's congratulate Brianna for this distinguishable honor. Our student of the month recipient from Hoboken High School recipient is Adrian Ray. Chef Nelson stated that Adrian is an excellent member of her advisory group. He's a student leader and is a positive influence on all others around him. Adrian embodies what it means to be a Red Wing. Principal Picky Beatrix states, "When she walks in at 7:30 a.m., Adrian is there. When she leaves at 6 o'clock p.m., Adrian is there." He is truly the face of Hoboken High School. Adrian is a hard-working student. He always has put forth a great effort in everything that he does, whether it is in the band, in his classes, or his friendships, he is all in. Adrian is also an entrepreneur. He owns his own DJ business. Some know him as DJ Ray. Recently, he DJed the middle school dance, and he negotiated a great price for the Hoboken Middle School students. Adrian is loved by all. He's a staple at the desk and a greeter in the morning. He supports his peers at games and events, and he is so deserving of this honor because of his love of his school, which is really overwhelming. Adrian is a member of the Hoboken High School marching band and the Hispanic Culture Club. When Adrian is not at school, he is performing and practicing his DJ skills. Adrian's life is music. Adrian's post-secondary plans include going to college to major in music business. It has applied to Roger Williams University, University of Bridgeport, and University of New Haven. When notified about the award, Adrian stated, "This is pretty cool. I am so proud. I love Hoboken Public Schools. I love my high school." Congratulations, Adrian, on this distinguishable honor. Thank you, and thank you to all of our recipients this evening on all of your distinguishable honors.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzhugh. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, but I think that includes a presentation. You want to?
It does, yes. So, there is a presentation. I'll save that to the end of my report. I just have a few things to report out. Congratulations to all of our students of the month for your hard work and dedication to your studies and to your extracurricular activities, and for making our schools so wonderful. This week and last week as well, including the next upcoming weeks, our school district is engaged in park testing, so our students are taking it in stride and doing extremely well. Our staff members are working as hard as they could to make it an enjoyable experience, or as much of an enjoyable experience as possible. Currently, in central office, we're in the process right now of preparing for our budget presentation that you're going to have the opportunity to hear and learn more about the plans for the future at our upcoming board meeting. But I think the one thing that we talked about in some of the most recent committee meetings, which I think is important to talk about prior to the budget presentations, and I think is somewhat of a good news point, and that is our enrollment projections. So I'd like to just take an opportunity to report out that it looks as if our enrollment projections for the 2017-2018 school year are on a positive upswing. Just to provide the Board of Education with some information, our 2016-2017 preschool enrollment currently is 825 pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 students, and it looks as if our 2017-2018 pre-K 3 and 4 will be at, and our seats will be filled at 865, with four additional preschool sections approved and added by the New Jersey Department of Education. Our K-6 enrollment numbers currently, right now, are at 1,132, and our projections, which look like they're going to hold fairly firm, are right now right at 1,389 K-6 students. Our middle school looks like it's holding firm. Currently, we're at 211 students, with next year's projection right at 209 students, so that will fluctuate a little bit up and down. Our high school numbers are at 418 students right now, grades 9 through 12. It looks like next year's high school numbers will hold somewhere firm around 444, 445 students. So you can see that the enrollment projection looks like there's an increase of over 200, well over 200, students for next year. In addition, I'd like to announce a few new programs that I'm really excited about. As you read in the weekly updates, there are new programs that are being added all the time in our schools, but there's a few of them that I would like to just mention publicly tonight. One of them is, we are now participating in the Hoboken Public Schools for students in grades 5 through 8 in the Model United Nations Conference 2017. That conference will take place in May, in fact, May 13, in Bergen County. We will be taking a select number of 5th through 8th grade students in preparation for the rolling out of the Junior Model UN Challenge for next year. Another program that has come up that we are going to begin to roll out is a Congressional App Challenge, and that's at the high school level. We are going to continue the Cyber Patriot Competition Challenge at the high school, but expand that to the middle school as well. One of our computer science teachers is already working with our middle school students to make that a permanent program in our middle school. This summer, for the first time, we have a number of students who are accepted to and are going to be participating in a program at Rutgers University for science, biomedical science, which is known as the WISE Summer Science Program. It's actually an extremely difficult program to get into. We had a number of students apply, and three students accepted. Three students were waitlisted, and we're hoping that the selective process will allow our waitlisted students to participate as well. And then, in addition, we are also preparing right now, researching and preparing to roll out a middle school gifted and talented competition program for next year, which is called Odyssey of the Mind. It's a very well-known gifted and talented program. I think our kids will enjoy it very much, particularly at the 7th and 8th grade level with the opening of the new middle school. And then, in addition, we are also, for the first time, trying the junior mock trial competition, piloting it with one 4th grade class at Wallace Elementary School, and it seems like the kids are enjoying the process so far, correct? You like it? Okay. So, because they do enjoy it, and because the teacher in the class seems to think it's an extremely beneficial and worthy opportunity, it's something that we're considering expanding as well. I also would like to announce to the Board that our partnership with Stevens Institute is continuing to expand. Next year, we are going to be rolling out something called Math Circles, which is going to be a partnership between some of the professors at Stevens, as well as some graduate students in partnership with some of our elementary teachers for professional development, and potentially as a part of our after-school program. We also are going to be registering students from our Project Lead the Way program at the high school to attend Innovation Expo, which is a new program at Stevens University, which will take place in May. We have also been invited and have accepted an invitation to participate in a STEAM Professional Development Workshop Series, which is in August at Stevens. So we will have a team of four teachers. It'll be an interdisciplinary team, including math, science, art, and potentially one additional math or science teacher that will attend the professional development. So we're excited about that. They've held a team spot for us. And then, lastly, we were notified that Stevens also held three spots for us, for our middle school students, to participate in the Center for Innovation in Engineering and Science Education Summer Program. So we have students that will have been recommended and will be participating in that as well. I am certainly proud to announce that our senior class, Class of 2017, continues to impress everybody at Hoboken High School and hopefully the community at large. Their scholarship totals have exceeded $8.1 million, which is well over... Which is well over our $1.2 and $1.4 million attainment just a few years ago. So with the work, hard work and diligence of our guidance department through instant decisions and exposing our kids to a number of new opportunities, we see that our scholarship totals are increasing. What we're really excited about is that 93% of our senior class has applied to two and four-year colleges, and our acceptance rate just about equals that. Our other students are actively seeking opportunities both in the workforce and potentially military service as well. So we're very proud of the Class of 2017. Tomorrow is our April 12 Spring NCAA Signing Day, so we have five athletes that are signing to play at the NCAA collegiate level next year. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, four of the five are going to be attending NCAA Division II universities with either partial or full combination athletic and academic scholarships, and one to an extremely prestigious prep school in Connecticut in preparation for potentially NCAA Division I athletics the following year. So we're really excited about that. We'll take lots of pictures, send them out, and I'll be sure to include those in the Herald next week, at the end of the week, so everyone can see those pictures. We just recently finalized our slate of new courses for next year's Passport to Learning Program, so I'm extremely excited to report out that some of those classes, I think, are going to be really exciting for the kids. We are going to be rolling out everything from fitness fanatics to computer coding to mixed media art. We're going to continue to run our Feet of Wonder and Young Voices classes, because the kids seem to really like those. We'll be introducing a yoga and mindfulness class next year, a course in environmental studies and zoology as well. We have our chess course that we'll continue to run, as well as our literary magazine. We also are going to be offering a course in comic book design and writing for kids. And then lastly, we are also going to be rolling out a series of skill-oriented sports. So we're starting with golf in the fall, as well as soccer, and we're going to be transitioning in the spring with some sports like potentially tennis right now. And believe it or not, we have a little bit of interest in fencing, so we're looking at that as well. We're looking at some things that are a little bit different than sports that the kids might be exposed to in just a typical recreation program, so trying to expand some of their horizons. The program next year is going to look a little different, because we're going to be running two-day enrichment courses on Monday and Wednesday, and Tuesday and Thursday, with a Friday fun day, which will include arts and crafts and different things, free play, supervised free play for the kids on Friday. So we're excited about that. We have a presentation, I believe it's April 27th, to parents. It'll be held at the Wallace School, but all of those classes are open and available to all children in the district at all of our schools, K through 6. And then lastly, I'm really excited to introduce one of our teachers. Her name is Lauren Ekin. She's a new teacher at Wallace Elementary School. She oversees and teaches in our gifted and talented program. This year, for the first time, we decided to try a new STEM competition. So we participated in the New Jersey School Board's Steam Tank Challenge. And the Steam Tank Challenge was kind of interesting, because a number of teachers and administrators used rubrics to score student projects, which needed to include a whole series of problem-solving techniques and strategies to solve a common, everyday problem that our students see in front of them all the time. So we had a number of extremely, extremely positive and successful entries by our student teams. There was one overall winner, and that team is actually going to be competing in a regional competition for the Steam Tank Challenge. But if Ms. Ekin can come on up and tell us a little more about the program, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Johnson, for the introduction. As you may or may not know, STEM or STEAM is one of the latest trends in education. This approach promotes science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math education. Recently, the Hoboken Public School District came upon the statewide challenge called Steam Tank. This competition was developed by the New Jersey School Board Association and in conjunction with the U.S. Army. It borrowed the concept from the popular TV show Shark Tank. Throughout this competition, GNT students in grades 3 through 6 had to create an invention, modify an existing invention, or create a problem to develop a solution. Across the district, 18 teams developed very creative concepts. In keeping with the Shark Tank idea, the students had to make a virtual pitch that was viewed by a panel of Hoboken's administrative staff, which included Dr. Johnson, Mr. Fitchio, and others. With their help, each pitch was scored using a rubric, and the top teams were nominated to advance to the regional competition. The Steam Tank teams that earned the most votes and were nominated to advance to the Steam Tank's regional competition will be honored tonight. I'm going to ask that Mr. Delafave come to help pass out the certificates.
The Speedy Pollution Project was created by 4th graders Dia Bavishi, Kate Stanzek, and Brianna Frias. Detaches was created by 5th graders Alexa Brusero, Kid Watch was created by 6th graders Leslie Frazier A special congratulations goes out to our 6th grade team, who invented the disposable sewer drain collector. We are going to be watching their pitch momentarily. They were chosen to advance to the regional competition in May.
Hi, we're 6th graders from Wallace Elementary School in Hoboken, New Jersey, and our invention is the disposable storm drain screen. So storm drains are basically the round rectangular drains that you see on the inside side of the curb, and they collect rainwater, and the rainwater goes through them, and then it goes into the ocean without being filtered. As you already know, not just water goes on storm drains. Very often, trash and things like that get into the storm drains and eventually nick their way into our oceans, killing all the animals because they think it's food and they try to eat it. So our invention is this disposable storm drain screen. And it looks like this, basically, and it's different from the metal covers, because it's disposable, and you can, it catches trash and you can easily take it out. Our invention would be placed underneath the storm drain cover, so that when the trash contaminated water goes in it, our invention would catch everything from cans to chip bags and cartridges and things like that. And it would have just four rubber hooks that you could easily hook onto the corners, and then, when you're done, you can collect it by interlocking the hooks like that to get it back. Now we'll show you our demonstration. Here we have water contaminated with trash, and this is a simulation of what our invention looked like. So as you can see, we pour the water in, and it catches all the, as you can see from the bottom, most of the glitter is still not in the water. And this has caught all the glitter and all the trash at the top, and it hasn't broken. That, that shows that it actually works, and it can catch pollutants as small as these little filters. And then from here, the people who work for the town would come and get it, and form it into a bag, and just simply dispose of that, leaving us with clean water. So we like that invention, we're going to use, and we know that it can help so many people. And our targeted consumer would be towns, because mayors would buy them, and they will put them in the storm drain, and then the fish wouldn't die. So thank you for watching. Bye.
I would like to call up Hudson Matullo and Sanjana Samrai. Congratulations to all the teams, and we'll keep you posted on the results from Sanjana and Hudson's trip to the regional competition. Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Delafave is handing the things out. I think we're going to just call for a little five-minute recess, or give families a chance to take photographs, and then, before we resume the business part of our meeting, give families and students a chance to go home and do your homework. We'd like to resume the meeting, please. Anyways, everybody, please take a seat or continue to exit. Is that a nice way of saying that?
It was very nice.
All right, we'll resume the meeting. Thank you. Dr. Johnson, anything?
I have nothing else to say.
Mr. Moffett?
Yeah, just a quick note, just to let the Board know. In a lot of the informal committee meetings that we had to discuss the budget, we discussed that the program review of the budget had been started, and I answered some questions. Just to also report that the last day or so, I've also been in contact with the Executive County BA. The financial side of that review is also underway, and I've been answering questions through the day today. I expect in the next couple of days to get word on our final approval. So that's all I have to report at this point.
Thank you. Then would be time for committee reports. First one would be communications. Is that Ms. Lara?
Sure. Is this on? Okay. The Communications Committee met on April 7th at 1:30. In attendance was Dr. Johnson, Ms. Evans, Mr. Madigan, and myself. The committee discussed the mobile app. The district is finalizing the design of the mobile app. There are, so far, there are nine key buttons in this app, and so we're just kind of going over each of the app, each of the buttons in this app, to make sure that they're all user-friendly, and then they are tailored to the needs of our families. As mentioned in our previous meeting, this app is compatible with all phones and free, and it's a free app. We also discussed the transition of the new middle school principal. The committee reviewed protocol for introducing Dr. Davis to staff, students, and parents. I'm happy to report that Dr. Davis has spent her time meeting with our school principals. She has met with our 6th grade students and has had many wonderful conversations regarding their hopes and dreams for the future. She will be holding a meet and greet when we come back from Easter break, from spring break, with all 6th through 8th grade parents. And I'm very excited about that. We also discussed the renewals and non-renewals of our staff. The tenure staff will be renewed at the May 2nd Board of Ed meeting, and our non-tenure staff will be renewed at the May 11th Board of Ed meeting. And lastly, we talked a little bit about budget information and just ways to communicate our budget. In order to best communicate our new initiatives and academic programs supported by the budget, the superintendent is working on a document to be used as a public relations tool. This document will include programs that she has mentioned a little bit earlier that are changes to our gifted and talented program and enrichments, specialized programs like the Junior Model UN, Odyssey of the Mind, a full-scale math overhaul of studies, and a new high school program of studies, and much more. So this is really just a way of us showing you, you know, where the money's going into our, into the programs at our schools. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The curriculum is next. That would be Ms. Obeloff.
The Curriculum Athletic and Performing Arts Committee met on Wednesday, April 5th. In attendance was Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Evans, Ms. Delara, and myself. Some of the items discussed include a community block grant. The district is going to explore a community block grant application and possible partnering with a variety of city agencies and departments to provide a wide range of middle school after-school programming. Passport to Learning was discussed, and advisory group consisting of staff and parents have been meeting to explore the new structure and new offerings for the upcoming Passport to Learning. Many of them were mentioned by Dr. Johnson in her report. The pre-K registration, the signup process was restructured this year, including moving the registration to DEMRIST. Staff was on hand to assist the incoming parents with the registration and all their documentation. Process was very well received, and the staff was able to dramatically reduce the wait times. Some that I heard were, you know, 10 minutes to 20 minutes, which was amazing. In assigning the pre-K seats, priority is first given to students with special needs, children who are considered homeless, and children with siblings already enrolled in the Hoboken Public School District. All other pre-K seats will then determine by a random lottery selection and are based on the number of seats projected by the NJDOA. The high school program of studies was discussed, and as mentioned in previous meetings, the Hoboken High School program of studies has been going through a revamping. And two of the additional opportunities available to the students will include a middle-college partnership with Fairleigh Dickinson University and a virtual school program. The middle college program is a dual-enrollment program, offering students the ability to earn two college credits from Fairleigh Dickinson at a variety of courses taken at Hoboken High School. And the online virtual program will give students access to a range of alternative individualized instruction, whether they need credit recovery, a wide range of AP offerings, and college courses. In the gifted and talented program, Mr. Delafave, who is the Director of Innovative Programs, is putting together an information kit for the parents and community, detailing the process for identifying students who are eligible for the gifted and talented program. It'll discuss what assessments are used, and what support programs and activities are available for those accepted into the program. And just, there was a language survey done at Hoboken High School. The student language survey was conducted there, and of the 420 students surveyed, 114 students, almost 30%, are fluent in a second language at home. And the survey found that there were nine languages represented. I don't have the full list, but I know that it was mostly Spanish, and then Italian and Punjabi. So that was very interesting to learn. And that was my report. Thank you.
Thank you. To my left is Mr. Madigan on Facilities.
Okay, our Facilities Committee, we met on Wednesday, April 6th. I had attendance with Sharon Angley, Tom Clubfeld, Dr. Christine Johnson, Tim Callagie, and myself. We had Facilities Use for ZOG Sports. It's on tonight's agenda at 12:02. We all thought it's okay. They've used the field already for this, and we're approving it, if it approves tonight. We talked about the middle school relocation. It's updating plans, waiting to hear from the NJSDA to move forward on this issue. Stadium bathrooms are already in the middle of their work. They were putting tiles down as of last week for them, so hopefully they'll be ready soon. And the last one, we were still capital improvement planning for the summer, still moving along with those plans to the district. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Madigan. Ms. Angley, Finance Committee report, please.
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, April 4th at 7:30 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Clubfeld, Mr. Biancomano, Mr. McNamara, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for board approval. Item 10.07, which is the approval of contracts, that is a contract revision related to our pre-K program. This agenda item revises the contract with my This agenda item revises the contract with Miles Square Learning Preschool Provider for an upward amount of $94,000, which is funded by the early childhood aid. We'd like to thank the Wallace PTO for a very generous donation for an assembly for grades three through six, as well as a field trip for the fourth graders to the Sterling Hill Mine Museum. Also like to thank Morgan Stanley for their donation to the Brant School. We discussed the food service update. February profits were $3,000. February year-to-date profits of $11,000. We also discussed the unpaid lunch balance. The administration has sent out communication to families with unpaid lunches. We urge families to pay off their debt and replenish mealtime with adequate amounts of money for those children who buy their lunch. The committee also discussed the 2017-2018 budget. As presented by Mr. Moffett at the March meeting, the proposed tax levy increase is 2% for charter schools and 1.1% for district schools. Over the last week, the board has been meeting in small groups with Mr. Moffett and Dr. Johnson to go over any questions that board members may have. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, there will be an information session on May 2nd for the community to hear about the budget and that's prior to the board voting on the budget, which is May 9th. That's it.
Thank you. And Ms. Evans, there it is.
Great. Okay, so the Governance and Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, April 4th. In attendance were myself, Ms. Montgomery, Ms. Soboloff, Mr. Clubfeld, and Superintendent Johnson. We reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval tonight. Just, I'll go over a few items that generated some discussion. Item 9.02, we have five teachers retiring from the district. Beth Mitsakos, Michael Florio-Izing, Frank Rizzo, Isabel Bruno, and Lynn Fusco. These teachers combined have served the district and the students for over 100 years, combined. And we do want to thank them for the dedication that they've shown to our students, to the district. And wish them all the best in their retirement. Items 9.13 and 9.14, these have to do with the upcoming district show, Peter Pan. Item 9.13, we're approving three volunteers. We'd like to thank them for their support of the show and the students. Item 9.14, approving staff for the show. The six musicians are new appointments and the three at the top, the assistant director, the flying supervisor, and the install crew operator are replacing previously approved staff for these positions. And you'll see those positions rescinded in item 9.18. I'll just point out item 9.15, it's not entirely clear what that is just from reading it. This is the approval of the NJ Department of Education Office of Special Education Program Statement of Assurance. Ms. Pope, the Director of Special Services, completed the assessment for the district and this statement is submitted every year and it certifies that the district policies and procedures related to special education under IDEA Part B are in place and that we are following them. Then also, the committee discussed staffing for the remainder of the current school year and looking ahead to the upcoming school year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I was only going to comment on the many budget committee, well, not budget committee, budget meetings we had last week. I believe at this point, every board member has had the opportunity to review any questions of the budget. It's not done yet, right? We're still, it's an evolving document and questions can still be entertained over the next month. But to repeat what Ms. Angley just said, our budget hearing is May 2nd, at which point the entire budget will be presented publicly, followed by the vote on the budget the following week on May 9th. Here's another item from communications.
Yeah, sorry. That's what happens when you have too many notes. I also wanted to touch, talk a little bit about April being Autism Awareness Month. This is a very special and important month to our community and to our families and our district schools. The purpose of this month is to raise awareness, treatment, research, inclusion, and overall acceptance worldwide. I am proud to share with you all a few events and initiatives our schools have participated in during the first few days of this month. During the week of April 3rd, Principal Shannon Wallace Elementary displayed a powerful and inspiring quote outside of Wallace Elementary that read, "April is Autism Awareness Month, different not less." He mentioned, "I want to show inspiring quotes outside of our building to honor the students in my school during Autism Awareness Month." This week's quote read, "April is Autism Awareness Month, educate, love, and accept." During the April CPAC meeting, the Special Services Department brought in Lindsay James, author of The A in Autism Stands for Awesome. The book is about a neurotypical girl that has a friend whom she loves very much and has autism. It touches upon the importance of teaching our children to be accepting, loving, and caring towards other children despite of their differences. And last but not least, on April 7th, children and staff were encouraged to wear blue in honor of Autism Awareness Day. Flyers were sent home with very helpful websites and information statistics to all of our families. As a parent to a child with autism, I want to thank all the schools, the principals and the staff that have participated thus far. I look forward to reporting all the upcoming events in our next May meeting.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be the public comments on agenda items.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, isn't it public comments about board comments on committee reports?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Peter? Well, go ahead.
Okay. So, Dr. Johnson, regarding your report, you discussed enrollment increases tonight. And just a few years ago, I remember the high school at an enrollment of close to 600 students. So I'm glad to see that we are going up slowly but surely in that category and we are progressing at our enrollment in the high school and it's because of your wonderful work this past year that I believe that we are increasing. I just wanted to make the public aware, though, when we discuss enrollment at the early childhood level, that that's funded a little differently than enrollment increases, if they follow the state formula. But if that's funded a little differently at the, for the K-12 level. And correct me if I'm wrong, or Mr. Moffett, correct me if I'm wrong. So obviously, we have that $10 to $12 million that covers our early childhood enrollment increase, which I believe is 67 students this year, 65 students this year. And I remember being, first being elected to the board six years ago and there was 450 students. Now there's 965 students, so I think it's great. But I just want to make the public aware that that's funded a little differently when we talk about the budget compared to what gets funded where. With that said, the enrollment increases that you said, that you stated tonight, these are projected by the district, correct? Because we really don't know what our increase in enrollment is until the October report.
Well, the answer to that is somewhat yes and no. So we know it from the perspective of our current grades moving up. So if you look at it somewhat of a diagonal chart, what we're seeing is, and it does kind of make sense that every single year that we graduate out a high school class of anywhere from 85 to 130, what's happening is our kindergarten enrollments are ranging at the 260 mark up. So we graduate out a class and then we replace that class with a new class that's anywhere from 150 students on. So we do know that for sure in terms of the enrollment growth and that's what we're looking at. So as that's happening and that kindergarten class is coming in, we're seeing that. We also surveyed the pre-K 4 parents for enrollment purposes for kindergarten so that we have a better idea of how to budget for kindergarten sections. And it was kind of interesting because we had anticipated anywhere from maybe, I was thinking maybe it was going to be right around 280 families that said that they were actually staying and 320, we received 324 responses. Now, will they all hold true? We don't know that for a fact, but conservatively speaking, it was a pretty wide gap from what I had anticipated. Now, the other thing we do know is every year that our pre-K 4 enrollment increases, naturally our kindergarten enrollment is increasing somewhat simultaneously. So that's where we're seeing that enrollment growth predominantly. So if you look at our numbers, it's somewhat interesting. At the high school level, you have your hundreds, your low hundreds. You have your middle school level, which is also right around your low hundreds, right? And sixth grade as well. Your fifth grade, our fifth grade, is a little bit of an unusual cohort. It's a smaller cohort and always has been a smaller cohort. But right behind that fifth grade, we then see in the mid to upper 100s for two grades and then we jump to the mid 200s and then potentially this kindergarten, which will range right around the, you know, we're projecting on paper 344, which also shows our new kindergarten enrollees that we actually enrolled during preschool registration. So, you know, maybe that 30 to 40 student buffer is a good buffer for us to look at.
But, and just to confirm, in the October report, though, that's when we will have the confirmed numbers, correct?
Correct. We'll know 100% for sure on October 15th, but right now for-
Projection purposes for the budget, right.
Projection and also for quest sections and planning purposes, that's kind of where we-
And then just one more question regarding the amount of students in the high school. If you look at the choice students that we have, I know the majority of them are probably in the high school. Do you have a number of how many choice students?
So the district has 166 choice seats.
Okay.
We are graduating out this year 34 choice seats.
Because the maximum is 120 now with the new state law. Am I incorrect or?
Maximum for-
Didn't Governor Christie pass a law, maybe Vito can jump into this, with the maximum amount of choice students a district can have is 120, I thought?
We're at 166 and each year they continue to allow us to expand that. We haven't taken the expansion of it. We have in years past. We didn't this year, so we're at 166. But we're graduating out the 34 students and this year we made a determination that those 34 students, we were looking for school choice applications in our fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, because those are our lower enrollment grades. But predominantly, for next year, they will be placed in fifth through ninth grade, those open seats.
Okay.
Those open seats.
And you don't have a number of how many total in the high school?
I can tell you that I believe we have, so this is an estimate, but I'm pretty sure we have 16 school choice students K-6. The rest of, or K-5. The rest of them range from sixth grade through 12th grade. We have, we range right around 30 to 40 students at each high school grade and then we also have some in our middle school and then scattered throughout the district.
So it's about 120 choice students. If you eliminate that from the 445, it's about 300 and change resident students.
Correct. That's about accurate.
Thank you.
Are there any?
I just have the one speaker for the agenda items only, Ms. Versace. I also added your name to the non-agenda items, if that was okay, if that's what you, either way.
Okay. One's quick. Good evening. Roseanne Versace, fourth grade teacher, Wallace School. I would just like to comment on the five retirees. According to our calculations, they have about 150 years of service to the district. So, just want to congratulate them and wish them a long, fruitful, and enjoyable retirement. I've had the pleasure of working very closely with four out of the five. Mrs. Izing, who is in the high school, I've never had the pleasure of working with, but I know she's a very talented artist. But Ms. Mitsakos, Mr. Rizzo, Mrs. Bruno, and Ms. Fusco are all very dear to me and dear to everybody at Wallace. And while we will miss them, we appreciate all that they've done for the students and the district. I mean, they've literally taught generations and we're just very happy for them. It's not always an easy decision to retire and I know they gave it quite a bit of thought, but we just wish them all the best in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Waiters asked to be added to the list of agenda items only.
Not added. I got here like 6 o'clock, an hour, but I didn't want to follow you in the bathroom and I told you to sign me up, John. Anyway, Pat Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. Being that it was on new business and you mentioned about the school choice, I want to mention that real quick. I was at a meeting. The reason is 160 because the Hoboken students was treated differently. Some of them was forced out by address, so you couldn't really count that. So that's what offset the number. But she's absolutely doing it exactly right. 120 you talking about, it didn't include those students. A lot of people moved, but they was already in the district, so you can't count that as school choice. They counted the ones that came in and did the application that was not residents of Hoboken. So if that helped you any, I just wanted to clarify with that. The intimidation and bullying, I think it's 9.06? This policy is like, this is what, this number here is with all the school districts and each little incident that occur or whatever is just being documented, including myself. The parent will get something in the mail individually or whatever. I just want to thank you so much for that and being on that situation because it became like a big problem. Everybody know worldwide, but I like the way you guys are handling it and keeping the parents abreast of what's going on as far as, you know, intimidation and bullying and stuff like that. And I've noticed it went down a lot, you know, and the students too, like as far as maintaining themselves in fights and stuff like that. I just wanted to say, you know, speak on that, on the agenda item. Thank you.
And that would take us to approval of the consent agenda. Before we have discussion, is there a motion?
Motion.
Irene?
Second.
Ms. Angley? Any discussion? I thought you said you had no questions.
More of a comment?
Yeah?
More of a comment than discussion?
Was making now or when you're voting?
I could say when we vote, the comment.
Okay.
Yeah. Number of things. I first want to commend the superintendents. Tonight, there are several stipends for administrative aides and I think that, for aides, teachers' aides, excuse me, not administrative aides, teachers' aides. And I think sometimes they, some of the most ignored population of the faculty, I mean, they get paid the least and they take care of the most neediest of students. So I'd just like to see extra compensation on the agenda for them. And I know that's what we worked in the negotiations committee, which I was on, to ensure that we don't have a high turnover, but it's, in this way, they stay in the district and certainly their work is much appreciated. So I'm always happy to see that. I also would like to congratulate Keon Walker for being named the head football coach. He's been an assistant here since 2014, I believe, and he's a Hoboken fireman, so he's servicing the community and he's also a permanent sub in the district. So we look forward to many successful seasons with him at the helm. And then just one more, just a question regarding Peter Pan, the 9.14, the referral staff for Peter Pan, the district musical. I understand that 9.18 takes away the stipends or basically the stipends are awash because we have stipends that are being rescinded and then stipends being added tonight. But I'm just curious, with the musicians coming in, are we still under budget for the play? Yes, because I know Ms. Miller's been doing a phenomenal job of trying to fundraise. So I, you know, maybe just a brief description of what actually the budget is compared to what you fundraised. I don't know if you have those figures or not.
I don't have the figures at hand with me, but we will get them for you and send them to the board.
Excellent. Thank you. So I just want to make sure, but you can confirm that we're still under budget?
Correct.
Okay, great. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Biancomano. Anybody else? I would, as a procedural issue here- I would, as a procedural issue here, I'd like to pull ten point zero five approval of Bills and Claims Report and vote on that separately. Mr. Moffett?
duly noted.
Ten point oh five is Bills and Claims will vote separately, so. Here we know of the discussion, can we call the vote on the consent agenda minus ten point oh five? Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
No on the minutes, six point zero one. Yes on everything else.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Uh, six point oh one, no, and that's all. Everything else just, of course, we're happy to have the one separate, right? And one statement on this, I'd like to just congratulate the retiring teachers at nine point oh two. A lot of them I know, they're in the system. Ms. Ising was the art teacher when I was in high school. Ms. Bruno is such a sweet lady, teaches Spanish, loves teaching the kids Spanish that I met her when she was in high school. And Ms. Fusco, another art teacher who loves the children all the time, she meets you on the street and asks us about my children who are now grown men, so they'll be missedies if I've... And Frank Rizzo, I see him around town, Frank's a really nice guy, so I'd like to thank them on their services.
Continue on the poll. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Mr. Cuffell?
Yes. Do we need a motion on ten point oh five? A motion?
Motion. Second.
That was Ms. Montgomery on the second. The only reason I pulled it is that there's, I guess what you say, in an abundance of caution, there's a slight conflict of interest that I would have, and I will be abstaining simply on one invoice being paid on a rather large one, so it's...
My amendment?
And I think Ms. Sobolov and Ms. Evans will be abstaining. So can we call the vote?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
I would just like to say that, I've been saying the past few months, in terms of employee indemnification for the ethics charge, that as long as you presented us with a bill, I realized that it is the law that we needed to pay it, and I'm going to vote yes, because there is a bill presented tonight and there wasn't in the past, so yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Abstain.
Mr. Madigan?
I'll be abstaining, but for different reasons than these members, it has something to do with refereeing and umpiring with the state, so I'll be abstaining.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Abstain.
And Mr. Cuffell?
Abstain.
That's for an affirmative with the abstentions, I do believe that passes?
That is correct.
Now it would be time for, we have no executive session, public comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, we have seven speakers signed. First speaker is Sung M. Kim.
My name is Sung Mi Kim, and I live at nine twenty-eight Willow Avenue. I wanted to come up here tonight and say a warm thank you to Irene Sobolov for being a caring and accessible school board member. For the first time in the four years that I've been a parent in the Hoboken Public Schools, I contacted Irene about two weeks ago and asked to meet with her because I had some questions about district policies. She made herself available to meet, and we had a wonderful conversation. Irene was able to share her experiences as a mother as I shared my own questions and concerns. What I love about Irene is that she's always dreaming of ways to make the schools better. As a parent, that's my kind of jam. I shared with her my dreams of seeing a more creative curriculum come alive with Hoboken history. I would love to see more walking trips in our walkable little town. I think it's essential that Hoboken kids know who Frank Sinatra is and be able to recognize his tunes. And I also think that kids should be able to cite Maria Pepe's name during Women's History Month in March. She was the little girl from Hoboken who sued to play Little League baseball, and now her name is on the clubhouse near Stevens Park. Irene shared her dream of seeing the kids at the high school raise bees. And because she cares about the emotional and social well-being of kids, she wants to see a particular program at the high school extended to students at all the schools in town so that conversations between kids can break down class and racial barriers. I totally love that. I think that the most important constituents served by this board are the little people who are home right now because it's bedtime, or they're at home texting their friends about the latest teenage drama. I think that the most important business of this board is the business of children. It's to craft and create school policies with an understanding of children's development and well-being. Everything else is just noise. What should be most newsworthy in Hoboken, all the ways that the kids flourish in our magical little town, is often lost to personal vindictiveness and noise. And as a parent, it's so disappointing and tiring to stand ringside to that. So thank you, Irene, for our conversation and for being someone on the board who truly cares about the interests of children. Just wanted to let you know that my family appreciates you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Vera Sirota.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moffett. My name is Vera Sirota, and I live at seven twenty-nine Madison. In February two thousand and eleven, my life changed forever. I became a mother to a beautiful little girl. In awe of our brand-new baby, but overwhelmed with the responsibilities of parenthood, I looked to find a community of moms. I searched for answers to the pressing questions and a gross new parents and came across a useful resource that we all know as the Hoboken Mommy's Yahoo Group. This online forum was a great find, especially for a first-time parent, and one of the things that I noticed almost immediately was a local mom posting as Ivan So. Anytime anyone had a question about the district schools, she would answer. Anytime there was a school event, she would advertise it, and she would proudly share photos and newsletters for families eager to learn more. She was a one-woman PR machine, and her name is Irene Sobolov. There are many parents new to the district in the audience tonight who were introduced to the Hoboken Public Schools because of Irene's efforts. We see the beauty and promise of our district and how far it's come. We see the complexities involved in weaving together all of the families in Hoboken, and we are firmly rooting for our district's success. We're also excited about the future and all of the new opportunities that Dr. Johnson is forging for the children through her tireless work. Thank you. Yes, we are committed to our own children's success and well-being, but we are also bound by the belief that the entire community needs our support. We're all in this together, and the children of Hoboken, including the most vulnerable in our community, depend on us, and they depend on Irene. Rita Pearson remarked, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." Irene has been a champion and will continue to be a champion for the children of Hoboken, and the community is all the better for it. A sign of leadership is that you inspire others to lead as well. It is evident that many of the rising leaders in our own school community learn from Irene, and I thank her for it.
Next speaker is Jean Mitchell.
Hi there, Jean Mitchell, four twenty Jefferson Street in Hoboken. I'll just make this short and sweet, but I met Irene in Church Square Park here in Hoboken. She told me about the merits of the Hoboken Public Schools while our sons played on the jungle gym. She encouraged me to get involved with the community. She introduced me to more like-minded parents, and friendships grew. Irene encouraged me to join the PTO and then ultimately the Board of Education, which I served for four years. Thank you, Irene. Irene was the first person I met when I moved into Hoboken, and there is no one in this city who I respect more. I'm very proud to be at your side. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rasko Tommen.
My name is Rasko Tommen. I live at eight hundred Jackson Street. Wanted to come out here tonight and provide some feedback and ask some questions, sort of like in two parts. First, to talk about some of the things that we achieved so far as the school district with Dr. Johnson, our new superintendent, and then pose some questions that I have about, you know, things that are going on and that are going to impact us going forward, right? Wanted to say thank you to Board of Education for doing a great job in hiring such a good superintendent as Dr. Johnson, and also for those that maybe weren't involved in the hiring process, or maybe she wasn't the initial candidate, to say thank you for working with her and rest of the board once she got on board. It's refreshing to see this, and I think it's a marked difference for some things we see in the past, we as the parents notice and appreciate that, so thank you for that. Okay? Couple of things, as a parent, I see as a big achievement in our school district are obviously Passport to Learning Program, which is great. This is the first year, there were some glitches and bumps, but that's to be expected. I'm looking forward to learning how we're going to make it even better next year. Second thing that I think was great is the fact that we created opportunity to get kids involved in John Hopkins University CTY program. I think that's a great thing as well. And then another thing was the separation of middle school, which I believe is coming here. I think that's also a great move, and so overall, a lot of things accomplished in fairly short period of time. In the past, I think continuity was a big problem for school district in this position, so hopefully you'll stick around and continue to do such a great job, okay? Also, wanted to try to learn a little bit more about plans for the future, and you guys touched on some of the things in your discussion earlier tonight. Teacher assignments and selections, you know, how do we set standard, evaluate the teachers, right? How do we reward the ones that are performing? How do we help improve the ones that maybe need help with improvement? And then most importantly, you know, we heard that, you know, five good individuals have retired tonight, you know, how do we replace them with the candidates, their best candidates that we as a school district can possibly attract, right? Second thing, enrollments. You guys talked about some of the stuff, obviously enrollment skewed in younger grades and falls off in later grades. Some of it is things that you guys don't control, which is the housing situation in Hoboken. I know a lot of my kids' friends that had to move out because they were in two-bedroom apartment, and they had boy and a girl, and you can't do anything about it. But then some are parents that were ready to deal with the housing situation, but they weren't ready to deal with, to compromise on housing situation and the education of their children, right? So, you know, what can we do to help people that want to stay in town and stick with the public school system continue to stay in Hoboken, right? Last summer, I believe, you guys had a wonderful idea, and it was a great turnout when you had the open forum for everybody, and you sat down and you explained to everybody what's going on when it comes to Passport to Learning. I think it was a good turnout, good communication, really helped people understand. I wanted to suggest that maybe we do something like this this year, not necessarily just about Passport to Learning, but about everything else that's going on. Sometimes maybe it's unfair because you guys tried to communicate a bunch of different ways, but I think it's different when you have a forum dedicated to that and you get the opportunity to hear other people ask questions that maybe you didn't thought of yourself, you know, et cetera. Also, we wanted to learn about, you know, again, going back to the fact that there's a lot of changes at the leadership level, there were a lot of changes in terms of approach to class makeup, you know, quote-unquote leveling or calling whatever you want, a bunch of other things. Again, would like to proactively learn what the plans are for next year, right? And then lastly, just kind of wanted to say that I have two kids, I don't know if I said in the beginning, I have a fourth grader and a kid in pre-K four, and there's a lot of parents in Hoboken, we were, you know, playing the lottery for charter schools, et cetera. My older son was actually accepted, you know, last year in a charter school, and we all of a sudden had a very tough decision to make, a lot of soul searching, a lot of thinking, and at the end of the day, we decided to keep it in public school. And a lot of it had to do, because once we realized that, the reason why we were even debating is not because of our experience to date, but because we were concerned about what's going to happen next year every time. And once we met with Dr. Johnson and once we saw things that she achieved in short period of time, that kind of made our decision much easier. So we're sort of, you know, showing our commitment to her and to you guys as a board, and I know there are a lot of other people in town that are feeling same way, so big thank you to everyone, and please keep up the good work. Thanks.
Next speaker is Ivan Sobolov.
Ivan Sobolov, two twenty-seven Gawn Street. I've been married to Irene for thirty years, been my best friend for thirty-five, okay? Unlike her accusers or her complainants, she can stand behind everything she's done, and I can stand behind her, okay? You know, she's reached out to the community, okay? She is the most politically correct and inclusive person I've ever met in my life, okay? And I've met quite a few people, okay? And again, this is how people perceive the comment, and I've been through enough human resources courses that we understand perception is the problem. This is absolutely not how this comment was intended, okay? And to make a statement about it is unbelievable. You don't know who you're talking about. You don't know who you're talking about. It's an outrageous statement, and you owe her apology.
Can you please address comments to the board, please?
It was a careless mistake, okay? This is more vendetta that John Madigan has against my wife for him losing a patronage job when they took control of the board in two thousand and nine. Truthfully, I think he's unqualified to sit on this board. I wouldn't entrust him with my child, Biggie Banks, never mind a multi-million dollar budget, okay? Yet, yet he wants to see the most devoted board member sitting up there resign. It's misguided. It's misguided, and it would be a total mistake for you and the community.
Please.
Okay? Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Roseanne Versace. And then the last speaker was a request by Ms. Waiters to be added. Ms. Waiters?
I actually wasn't last. I want to say that again. I got here earlier hour on purpose, but I was here to speak about this in the public's eyes, the ethic charges in the last paper, and what a coincidence we stand here today. Now, what just transpired with that last speaker is the reason we're here, because it's us against them. It don't have nothing to do with no vendetta you have built up. This is the type of behavior I've been saying eight years ago, when I stood here, and I was in Irene Sobolov's shoes two years ago, when they said I was anti-Semitic, okay? So listen, this is what happens when you allow anti-anything to come in this city. Our city had never been so divided, and I've never seen this. Imagine how I feel as the only African-American involved politically. There's no such thing as politically correct. Let me justify that first. You know why? It's the one that got the power and control. It's sad when you take a line of people and endorse everybody- everybody with that one line of people. And sometime it'd be two bad apples in that line. But when you stick your chest out and endorse somebody, be careful who you endorse. I can honestly stand here and say I'm a lonely independent. I ran nine years in this city as an independent because I'm a people's person. I'm anti-nobody. I like you whether you black, brown, green, purple, gay, straight. I love people. So see, I don't have to satisfy no big political boss. I don't have to worry about who got a vendetta against Pat Waiters because I like all the people, everybody, rich, poor, black, white, gay, straight. But you see, when you run for office in this town, and I warned each and every one of you, and I warned my super superintendent, you are truly the best. You was the first superintendent came here and you took my advice and I told you, step back and just observe. This town is political. I don't care who come to this microphone. They're not going to be man or woman enough to tell you the truth. And I'm mad because I promised the person that just texted me I would stay calm. But it's so hard to stay calm when emotions is in the air, racism is in the air, separation is in the air. Where is old Hoboken? Where is old Hoboken? And thanks to this administration that came here and made it so clear, from the charter school lawsuit to the anti-Semitic lawsuits to the you against me, me against them, every meeting we have at the city council is in closed session. Where did all of these lawsuits come from? These are taxpayer dollars that we could be using for to fix the potholes in the street. People falling in the street in a day because y'all focus is on the wrong thing. Good government do not have to satisfy a political boss. Run in this city if you're going to be for the people. But we're going to see what they asking Irene to do. We're going to see much more of that. Because guess what happened? If you feel like you got power and control and the majority and you the mayor and you have control over the zoning board, the planning board, the hospital board, the board of education, the city council, housing authority board, why do you think we're going to have change? It's not going to be a change. And I'm not a pessimistic person. I'm very optimistic. If you keep it up, this is what's going to happen. Because people think they could serve and be unethical because they could run to a lawsuit or run to their political boss that they promised an agenda to. When you run for office, run as a good government official. Don't run to satisfy nobody's agenda. Because see, things happen like this. When your tongue slipping, you say, it was an accident. My mother always told me those accidents sometime, a drunk person speak a sober mind. Thank you. Have a good night.
No other speakers? That's the end of the list. Any more comments? Please, Mr. Madigan.
Give you a little history here. We have an anti-bullying policy. We all worry about bullying. We put it into our policies here. On Thursday, March 23, at 2:44 PM, Dr. Johnson sent every single board member on this day a text. At 3:17, another text came through and it went to all the board members. And it was a screenshot picture of Hoboken Councilman, First Ward Councilman Michael DeFusco. Some gentleman who's a member of the public, a frequent critic of the Hoboken Board of Ed, said on that picture, awesome vision for Hoboken's future about Michael DeFusco's page. Well, that was sent to us, but also a text was sent to us. And it said butt buddies. It was typed in by a board member and the phone number showed up. So with this, I emailed the next morning Tom, who's the president, Tom Plumphell, and Sharon Angley, who's the vice president. I brought it to them as the head of this board right now. Tom, as president, and Sharon as VP of Hoboken Board of Education, I'm bringing this matter to your attention. We received a text message from Dr. Johnson. Again, I won't repeat it. In response to this text, we received a vile, disturbing, and certainly inappropriate text message at 3:17 from a sent board member. This text was regarding Hoboken Councilman and I do not wish to repeat the comments in the text. Tom, we must handle this before the board gets sullied reputation. I feel we must meet to discuss this matter. Tom sent back an email to me. John, I have already confronted the sender of the text message. Standby, Tom. Ms. Sobolov sent me a text later on. Dear John, I wanted to apologize for accidentally forwarding a screenshot I received to the full board text thread. I sincerely apologize, Irene. Problem with this is it wasn't a screenshot. The screenshot was of Mr. DeFusco and the private citizen, what they said. Problem was with the words, all right? The bullying words of saying butt buddies. It's inappropriate. It's meant as a slur and a horrible thing. Now, if a child said it, if our children did it in our school system, they probably be suspended. If a staff member who was employed by the Hoboken Board of Ed, they might be on charges maybe to be fired. If it was a teacher, that might be it. People might be complaining, a teacher shouldn't speak like that, shouldn't. The mayor of our town said, this is absolutely inexcusable. Mayor Zimmer, who backed Ms. Sobolov on this issue, does not back on this. She said it's inexcusable, okay? It's fine to take, at least take ownership of it and be honest. If you're saying it's a different meaning, tell me how those two gentlemen are married, father of two, a young, single, gay man who just had met recently, as Mr. DeFusco told me. Tell me how they are butt buddies. If that's the case, if you're going to use a different excuse, please be honest. Come out and say, I did it and it was wrong. I apologize for the right reasons. But if it was a staff member, we'd be up here voting for that staff member to be in trouble. And if we condone this, the next time, God forbid we have this of something else, of a staff member doing something inappropriate, or a child, then they're going to say, well, if the board is above the law, then so will we, okay? So with that, I would like to sponsor resolution tonight for the hateful speech board member Irene Sobolov on March 23, 2017, sent to all Hoboken Board of Education members. School resigned from her position as a Board of Education trustee. Anyone second?
Second. Can you repeat the resolution carefully?
I would like, who am I assuming is for you or for Bill Tormata? You? I would like to sponsor a resolution that for the hateful speech board member Irene Sobolov on March 23, 2017, sent to all of Hoboken Board of Education members. With that, I would, to Hoboken Board of Education members, I would like Irene to resign from her position as a Hoboken Board of Education member for that reason, for the hate speech.
So the resolution is that you would like her to resign?
Yes. So it's seconded, right?
Yes.
Well, is it you or is it?
I was the second.
So the, the precision of the resolution is, is significant. So let me, let me just comment on that. And then if you want to modify it, fine. And if you don't, that's obviously fine. So I was asked by the, the board president to comment on the resolution. So a Board of Education does not have the statutory authority to ask a board member to resign. So if the, if the resolution is a resolution calling for the resignation of a board member, it's, it's not proper. The School Ethics Commission and the Commissioner of Education has the authority to sanction board members, which can involve reprimand, censure, suspension, or resignation. So technically, the, the resolution is not proper. And no matter what happens with the resolution, it can't compel any action by the board. What's that?
Well, it's, it's, I want the board to understand if the resolution is not going
to be withdrawn, that it can't have any legal effect. And there, there's case law on this. I elaborate if anybody wants me to, but my goodness, you've been here long enough. So if the resolution is going to be debated and voted upon, the result will be a legal nullity. It can't compel any action.
But it shows where board members stand if they offer hate speech or not speech, in my opinion, if they vote for it or not. Or if they denounce it, or they don't denounce it. So if, if, if we had an employee do it, it's hate speech. If a board member does it, it's fine.
Yeah, obviously, the board can discuss it and it may be that discussion accomplishes the same thing. But in response to board president's question, I wanted everyone to understand that this resolution cannot compel any action by the board or any individual board member.
But right now, we have one on the floor anyway.
I'm simply responding to the president's request.
But if a resolution veto is voted, is a motion in second, I mean, the board does have a right to vote on it, correct?
Yeah. Again, I didn't say that the board couldn't vote on it. I want everyone to understand that regardless of what happens, it can, this resolution cannot compel action by the board or individual board members. If the mover and seconder want to keep the resolution on the floor, that's their prerogative.
Correct. So you proceed with the vote?
Do I have a right to comment?
Does everybody understand?
I'm sorry. I just, I have a question. I'm just confused. I mean, this, this to me is not a board-related issue or topic. You know, the text went through and I was there. And I know that we're under a confidentiality, but for it to go out, to me, it says that because it wasn't board-related, that it could, that this could, you know, get published in the paper and everybody, and it could be all over the web. So then why is this, why is this even, why is this even taken into account to be, to be, excuse me? Excuse me. And so I just, I'm just, I'm confused. This has nothing to do with what we do here as board members. So why, why are we, why are we voting on this? I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm talking to a lawyer. So if you, if you could just explain that to me.
Well, since I didn't make the motion or second it, I can't explain to you why it's before the board in the form of a resolution. And obviously, each individual board member is free to decide how to handle this particular resolution. In response to the president's question, I wanted the board members to understand, and I mean this very respectfully, it doesn't matter how you vote, it can't compel any action by the board or by individual board members. Why it's before us tonight is not a legal question that I can possibly answer.
Anybody else?
Do I have a right to respond? And I was also curious, it seems that some members of the public, since it wasn't on the agenda, that they were also would want to respond to this as they would any agenda item?
No, please, go ahead.
Yes.
That's why I'm standing at the microphone. Because this was not on the agenda and there was no opportunity to sign up for items that would be added to the agenda later.
Should I comment first?
Yeah.
I want to explain, I've never not owned it. I've never not felt responsible for it. The text message was intended for a conversation that I was having with two girlfriends, sort of musing on the interesting and ever-changing political landscape in Hoboken. And the term that was used was a term that I've always understood to mean sort of good friends, or in this case, interesting political friends. Of course, I was embarrassed, mortified when I found out what I had done, my mistake. And then I was shocked to learn that Mr. Madigan had interpreted that saying to mean that I was homophobic. Nothing, nothing is further from the truth of that. It is, does not reflect anything I've ever said or done before. It doesn't reflect how I've spent my life. I stand on my record. I have personally apologized to the, to the, my board colleagues, the administration, to Councilman DeFusco. I've reached out to many friends, family members, community members over the past week, including members of the LGTB community. And I am grateful for their support and their understanding. It was important to me to use this situation as a learning experience and I hope that it would spur a positive conversation on the importance of words. I do truly regret the entire situation and I absolutely sincerely apologize to anyone that was impacted by my actions.
I've been advised by a board attorney, and pardon me for fumbling through this because we're in a place where I've never been before, a live item. And I'm told that we can't open up the public comments on this specific resolution only. So you want to speak on to the resolution?
Michael Lenz, 408 Monroe Street. Would you like me to sign?
And by rights, I can open this up to anybody else. Hold, hold. It will be. We're now calling this item 10.09.
You ready?
Sure. They can sign up while you're speaking.
When I was a kid, if you went to the corner store and you got shortchanged, people would say you were gypped. Gypped is a word that is derogatory to gypsies. We didn't know that. We just used the word. When I was a kid, I watched The Wizard of Oz and I saw the munchkins and I thought they were cool. And I said, I love those midgets. I didn't know at the time the midget was an offensive word. I just used it. If you'd asked me 25 years ago for a group name for people from East Asia, I might have said Oriental. Oriental is an offensive term. I didn't know it. I just used it. The Urban Dictionary has as the top definition for butt buddy, good friend. Now, I don't think Irene was saying that they really were good friends. I think she was making a political joke, but I don't think she knew the reference. Why do I not think Irene knew the reference? Because I've known Irene for 30 years and I've never heard her say anything derogatory about anyone in terms of their ethnic or religious or sexual preference categorization. She says cutting things about people otherwise, but we won't go that far. The country that I live in is deteriorating into name-calling and hostility. And a lot of it is bullying. And bullying is a very serious thing. I was bullied as a kid. My wife was bullied as a kid. Some of my children have been bullied as a kid. It's not a word to throw around lightly. I think that when one of the people involved in this incident said that this is a moment that is a teachable moment, that was maybe the wisest thing that's been said. I think that people use phrases without knowing what they mean. And when they use them inappropriately in ways that hurt people, there are some things that have to happen. You have to acknowledge the harm. You have to apologize for the harm. And you have to resolve to do better. I think to take one of these teachable moments and to try and turn it into a political witch hunt is wrong. And I think that all of us have not reached the level of purity that would enable us to say that we've never done anything wrong. But I think that when someone has apologized eloquently in various forums, and again tonight, to go further with this is not anything except trying to make a battle out of something that was really a mistake. Irene Sobolov is a good person in my experience over 30 years and she's a smart person. The reason I believe her, that she didn't know what butt buddy meant, is because she's not that stupid. She certainly wouldn't have said something like that because it would be politically disastrous. And she has no hate in her heart, so she wouldn't say it out of spite. I think that it's time that we just let this go. Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Paul Somerville?
Good evening. Dr. Johnson and board members, thank you for all of your hard work and the time and effort you put into our school system and our children.
Excuse me, Mrs. O'Gorman, can I just-
Yes.
Ms. Waiters, could you take a seat?
Are we good?
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay. I'm one of eight children, and I'm used to being interrupted. I'm also a newcomer to town, five generations. And when I met my husband of 32 years, we moved to the block where the Corman family lived, and this is Irene's parents I'm speaking of. And in that era, also it was the height of the AIDS pandemic, my husband Alan was the head of the New Jersey Lesbian and Gay Coalition, and I was the head of the Hudson County Gay Activists Alliance. And on that block, which was a perfect Hoboken block, we still live there, the Cormans welcomed us into their home. It was like a United Nations. You could meet Germans and Americans, Italians and Jews and Latinas, and a gay couple called Paul and Alan. It is not in Irene's DNA to be bigoted in any way, it's just not possible. And when I heard about this unfortunate text, I thought, wow, never heard that term before. Let me be clear, I have never been closeted, I've been out since I was a child, and I have heard every gay slur there is, in three languages. And this one was new to me, so I had to look it up, and guess what? It doesn't mean what we're being told it means, it means other things, even Joe Biden has used it. But I can see how it can be misconstrued, because language does that, it's an imperfect tool. The only one who has a right to be offended, in my opinion, is Michael DeFusco, and he seems to have let it go. The subtext of this situation is what I really wanted to talk about, and that's the unfortunate part of this whole thing. There are, in your charge, 15 to 20% of your children are going to be sexual minorities, that's just the statistics, and they're paying attention. And as they approach adolescence, they will have done a masterful job, just as I had to do to survive, to read the subtext of a situation. And they know what this is all about, and you should too. All right? We are living in a world where our vice president condones gender, gender, what is the word? Conversion therapy, which is something not practiced by any credible doctor. Even as we sit here tonight, soldiers are rounding up people they perceive to be gay in Chechnya, and putting them in concentration camps. This was the first move that the Nazis did, because they thought no one would miss them, and they moved on to the other minorities in their midst. So please understand that this has nothing to do with the matter at hand, and everything to do with a political opportunity, and you're exploiting sexual minorities, and that is reprehensible. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Kratz, please.
Thank you, President Klubfeld and Superintendent Johnson. My name is Alan Kratz, 1245 Bloomfield Street. I am Paul Somerville's husband. In 32 years, I've learned not to speak over him, I haven't yet learned not to speak after him. He is always very eloquent. I will simply add to what Paul said, that I too have known Irene for the entire time that I've lived on the block where her parents and her family always welcomed me. There is not a homophobic bone in her body, and I regret that we're spending, and I see the clock ticking here, I'm going to be less than a minute, I regret the time that we as members of the community are spending talking about this. It really should be a teachable moment, this is an opportunity to raise this issue of proper speech in the classroom, not here at the board meeting, not here. And I really regret that those of us who serve on public bodies and volunteer our times, our time to that have our energies and our attention diverted to fake issues. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, I fully support Irene and hope that she remains a member of the Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Waiters?
Thank you, President Klubfeld. Excuse me, I just want to say one thing to you, Mr. Madigan, I'm quite sure if we got heads up, this is the topic, if we had heads up of your resolution number 10-0, I would have brought a bunch of people here to give you cushionly little cootles too, okay? But listen, this is what I'm saying, just what you just seen transpire with me and this young lady, I don't even know who she is, this is what's gonna happen. You better rethink this. I was, I teach my kids too as a kid, stop reacting and then think later. Everybody's standing up here saying how wonderful Ms. Sobolov is, she apologized, we know all of that's true, but some people was impacted, whether it was DeFusco or not, you gotta understand that too. Now, this remind me, this take me back, because I have gay and lesbian people in my family too. When the little boy jumped in the river, the other guy that posted the thing on the internet said he's sorry, but it was a minute too late. So this is a good example about reacting and then thinking later, and we all learned that in kindergarten, okay? But what the problem is, and I know where you trying to go with this, Mr. Madigan, is if you look at the websites lately, that this same administration and Irene too is all with Nancy Pickens and everybody else, this was going on in Hoboken the last three years. And lawsuits did transpire out of these things, because they won the lawsuits, because everybody came forward and talked about with a wonderful person, it excused their behavior about anti anything. This should not be allowed in our city. Unfortunately, it is. I could stand up here too and say what happened when I was a little girl growing up, and I could also say, which is more disturbing, what happened to me every other Wednesday night, when I sit in that council meeting, being the only African American. And I hear the comments, and I hear she's not educated, she's not qualified like her brother or husband just said to you, she's not qualified. It doesn't bother me. I learnt how to develop thick skin. Whether you saying what it was supposed to mean or not mean, other people that is, is in that nature, that's gay or lesbian, maybe they looked at it personal too. You cannot stand up here and say this is not a matter, it's not a board, yes it is. When Irene Sobolov took that seat, you take an ethics test too, I go to all of your ethics forms, you supposed to maintain a good behavior, you supposed to be a product of your environment, okay? So other people got nice stories to tell, and other people could stand up here, because if I see something like that, it's very disturbing. And it shouldn't be let go. So now, if it don't be let go, now we're gonna have a bigger problem, and I want to see how many people this gonna accumulate to let that be taken away because she said, I'm sorry, are you serious? You have a whole city here, that's the problem now, stop thinking it's one-person city. The mayor made a comment, like I said, they right, they all telling you it's politically, it's politically motivated. We got an election coming up. She went against the same people she supported for the charter school when it was an election coming up four years ago. So don't even use politics. We want something to be done about this, and I am not letting this one go. Madigan, I'm in your corner, reach out to me, please, because it's not fair. If it was somebody else or one of us, it would have been a big deal made, and we would have been stepping down tonight. Thank you.
That's right. Next speaker is Shatali Khanna.
Hi, Shatali Khanna, Second in Madison. First, I want to say I'm a huge supporter of our district, and my children are thriving. I am thrilled to see our district parents serving on our board and grateful for their public servitude. I want to highlight how amazing Irene truly is, and remind everyone of her dedication to and passion for our district. She continues to work countless hours and has accomplished so much for our schools. She exemplifies inclusion for all, and seriously, we all know that. Actions speak louder than words. Many of us parents will not let you resign without a fight, and how about all the women affected by Mr. Madigan's past negative comments? So please, let's not go there. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Kwak. There she is.
Hi, Linda Kwak, 1125 Maxwell Lane. I've met Irene a long time ago, a few years now. We all had coffee with Irene when we first came to the district. I wanted to know how the district's doing, how the past has been, and I can tell, there are some people, they do it and they do the job for all the children. And she talks about all the children in the district, it doesn't matter where you live, whether you're at Maxwell, whether you're on Jefferson, whether, whatever color of your skin, whatever, any kind of sexual orientation, and you, I truly believed her. I know when she said, I don't have a homophobic bone in my, in my body, and I believe her. And I even myself looked up the term, because I've never heard of it, and on the internet, it's 50/50. Half of it said it's good friends, half of it said the other way. So I believe her, again, when she said she didn't mean it that way. And I think when we look at things like that, we always look at the intent. I went to an anti-bullying training with, at the Wallace School, and we discussed the district anti-bullying policy, and when things like that happen, you always look at the intent of what they said and what they meant, and do they actually mean it? And I absolutely believe that Irene did not mean it that way. From all my interactions with her, all the years of knowing her, she does not have a bone of prejudice and discrimination in her body, and she really means it, and I believe her. Last, I want to bring up a little story about my children. My daughter, we were having breakfast conversation the other day, and she said, you know what, mommy, when I get married, I'm gonna marry a girl, and because I want to have girl babies. I said, well, it doesn't quite work that way, and then we went on to explain things like chromosome and X and Y, and because I was a biology major, so we explained, I used the biology to explain things to her. But our children also are not born with any kind of prejudices and discriminations. We as parents are examples, and we show them. And I just want to say, we can all be better people, because we're here working on a school board, and we are our children's role models, that we are better than fighting about this nonsense, because our children today, it's just part of normal life to them. Some of these words may mean different things in different times, but to them, this is part of life, this is normalcy. So instead of wasting our time on these non-issues, I think we should just move on and talk about all the work that Dr. Johnson and this board has done. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Tomlin, Rasko Tomlin?
All right, so now from the guys that praised you earlier for working well together, okay? I really came here to talk about board education stuff. I, when this came up, I went on internet to kind of educate myself of what happened here, so I really had no opinion coming into this, right? When I was listening to Sobolov speak first, right, and give explanation about what happened, I was a little bit skeptical, thinking, you know what, yeah, butt buddies can go both ways, but if you happen to know what Mr. DeFusco's sexual orientation is, probably not the best term to try to use, and definitely poor texting skills, okay? I happened to know recently, I met Mr. DeFusco, because as a board member in my building, I was working with him on a project, it was about planning board. Think he's a great guy, passionate about what he does, think he does a great job representing community, right? So as I'm listening this back and forth going on, trying kind of to see what's going on and, you know, how do I feel about it? I also read in the article that apparently Mr. DeFusco has accepted the apology, right? Then there were two gentlemen here previously that apparently are, you know, gay and known Ms. Sobolov for 30 years, and they're saying they don't believe that she meant it in a bad way, and she meant it in an offensive way. So if we are talking about a controversy, and Ms. Sobolov has clarified her position, Mr. DeFusco is saying he accepts the apology, we have members of gay community saying that they don't believe this was intended in a way that's meant to be offensive towards gay community, and this resolution cannot force Mr. Sobolov to resign, then I'm kind of wondering what's the point, right? If the point is to say how you feel about that type of inappropriate comment, then I think everybody sitting here is probably gonna say that that language is not acceptable, not appropriate, and if Ms. Sobolov doesn't have history of these kind of incidents, this is something that happened first time, I mean, if there's anybody here, and in this room, that in their life in private hasn't used a comment about something or somebody that they wouldn't use in front of their boss or in front of their children, please stand up, I'll sit down, because I'm not, right? So I, you know, I think if, this is a bit of a waste of time, in my opinion, this point of time, because if this is about board, if we feel she's not doing a good job as a board member, that's a one thing, right? If we are talking about a comment that is supposedly offensive to gay community, and we have, again, a person that was supposedly directed to saying they're not offended, two other gentlemen saying they're supporting her, then, you know, what are we doing at this point of time? I think everybody should say this is not acceptable, and, you know, she either does a good job as a board member or she doesn't. Beyond that, it goes into that area of politics that a lot of us don't like and don't appreciate. So again, I think at this point of time, I would recommend you guys take a vote, and then, you know, even if it's not binding, you state how you feel about language, and then it's up to Ms. Sobolov to decide whether or not she wants to resign based on her contribution to the effort of a school board, and I think that's the way to move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry I came late, so I didn't get a chance to sign up to speak, but it was a Jewish holiday, and I just arrived, so I would like a few minutes if I can, address the board.
You're signed up.
What was that?
I just signed you up.
Okay. May I speak?
There's someone signed up before you.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie Dowd is the next speaker.
Hi, Jackie Dowd, Prince 618 Madison Street. I really didn't prepare to speak tonight, but I felt I needed to when I heard about what was happening. As other mothers and parents have stepped up today, Irene was my kind of gateway to the Hoboken Public Schools, a very warm, welcoming, open arms, source of truth and information about the schools that I will never forget and always value. So when I heard, you know, what was being charged against her, I, it was so incongruent with my knowledge, my, my understanding of Irene Sobolov, that it was hard to understand. So I decided it was one of two things, it was either a gross misunderstanding and not knowing of a person, or it was something that was being used for political gain, and, you know, I'm gonna be generous and say it's the first, and I would say, you know, there probably is a learning opportunity here, and I think the learning opportunity is that there are people that could get to know Irene Sobolov a lot better. Thank you.
Lynn Danskert, 1313 Park Avenue. I just arrived, I have no idea what anyone said before me, I, really doesn't matter to me, but I am going to speak. Irene has been serving on the board for a long time, I don't even know how many years, and if you're on her side politically and you support her, she loves you, and she will, you know- And she will, you know, say and do and bend over backwards for you. But if you disagree with her, or you have different political ideas, or just have a different philosophy, she is not the sweet, nice, you know, person that everybody thinks. And I know, because I ran for the Board of Ed three years ago, against her slate. Not her personally, but against her slate, or actually, it was against her personally. And the words and the way that she spoke with me and treated me was disgraceful. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight because you all represent what this community is about, and how our children should act every day, in their classrooms, in the playground, at the soccer field, and in restaurants. And the best way that I can describe how I feel tonight is to read the letter that I sent to all of you at about 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock this afternoon. Dear Dr. Johnson and Mr. Koplel, as a taxpayer and a registered Hoboken voter, I am writing to you as I will not be able to attend this evening's meeting because of a Jewish holiday. The Board of Education trustees have a responsibility to the Hoboken community, the district, and the students to formulate and abide by all policies necessary for the operation of the school district. One of those policies is the anti-bullying policy. It is now public knowledge that a text forwarded by Irene Sobolov violated that very policy, specifically the section that states that if something that is said or written that has an effect of insulting or demeaning any student or individual, group of students or group of individuals, is considered bullying. Although Councilman DeFusco has accepted Irene's apology, her words were heard loudly across this community, including those very children that she serves as a Board of Education trustee. I will also say that the other person who was involved in this communication was Mr. Brian Murray, and he was not called and given an apology like Mr. DeFusco was. Engaging in this kind of dialogue and thinking that it's fine to forward such harsh and hurtful words is disgraceful, especially for an elected official. Irene Sobolov is currently under investigation for an ethics charge. And this ethics charge was something that she did while serving as a Board of Education trustee, and now has engaged in communication that can be construed as offensive to a particular group of individuals. I ask that you vote in favor of Irene Sobolov's resignation from the Hoboken Board of Education. And Irene, to save this community from any further embarrassment, I ask that you step down from your position on the Board of Education immediately. There may be people in this room who found what you said not to be offensive, but for every person that has found it not offensive, there are people who find it offensive. And unfortunately, when you hold a position on a board where you're elected by the community, and you say things or do things that a student in this community, if he or she did, would be reprimanded and would face consequences. If you don't step down tonight, that's fine, but you wait and see what's going to happen over the next weeks and the next months, as people start to come together and put some pressure on this board and in this community, that enough is enough is enough. An ethics charge, the way that I personally was treated, and I have, you know, written, you know, documentation, and what you did, you know, on March 30th was disgraceful. And I just think that it's time to move on.
State your name and the address.
Phil Cohen, 20611 Street. I've raised my kids here with Irene and her raising her kids here. We've been friends for about 30 years here in Hoboken. She is the exemplar of a public servant in this community. She has given countless hours to this community, she cares about this community and all the kids in this district. She's apologized for the mistake that she made, and she's acted responsibly as a leader in this community. I can't tell you how much I respect you, Irene, and the work that you've done for this community, and I'm sorry that you're going through what you're going through right now. But I'm sure that the community will pull behind you and support you as you go through this. I wanna ask you and urge you to remain a dedicated trustee of this district, to continue doing the work that you've done. To the members of the board of this district, when we talk about setting examples for our students, talking about working together and being leaders, I think trying to embarrass and humiliate your colleagues when you know you don't have the votes for this resolution, but you're doing it for purposes other than what's in the best interest of this district, it's a sad day for the district. I believe that. And it's unfortunate, and I'm frankly disappointed in this resolution, and I'm disappointed that it has a second, and that there even has to be a vote on it. I agree with Councilman DeFusco that this is an opportunity for a teaching moment, and we can all learn from this. But one of the things I think we should learn from this is that this is no way to run a district. This is no way to have votes like this, to try and embarrass and humiliate your colleagues who made a mistake. So, thank you, Irene, and best of luck to you and the family. Thank you.
Ms. Versace will be the final speaker.
So, I would more or less just like to echo Mr. Cohen's comments. I question how this even became a public matter when I assumed that the communication was private, but in any case, I'm sitting there, and I'm just... I'm disgusted, I have to say. I'm disgusted because for the past few years, I felt like these meetings were very fruitful and productive, and now we're getting back to the same nonsense that we experienced many years ago, where it just was a back and forth and a hateful two, three, four hours of speech between opposing board members. Some people come up here and they always have all the answers. I find that interesting. But I think to almost conduct, almost like a witch hunt tonight, I think was really very disheartening for me. I think it's something that if there is an issue, and if there's a concern, it should've been addressed in private among the board members. I think there are far... There are very important issues that we need to deal with, and I'm not saying that this isn't important, but to publicly humiliate somebody, I don't care who you are, I don't care what side you're on, I wouldn't have approved of it if it was... If it was the other opposing factions or whatever. I think we need to conduct ourselves as adults. I think we need to consider that children do watch this, because I have kids say to me, "Ms. Versace, I saw you on TV last night." And to think that we condone this kind of behavior, or we allow this kind of behavior to happen, people come rushing in at the last minute and attacking people, I mean, what kind of nonsense is that? You know, what kind of nonsense is that? This is not a bullying matter. This is not a bullying matter. Read the bullying policy, and you'll understand what bullying is. Maybe it was a stupid mistake, I'm sorry to use the word stupid, but whatever. I mean, I think we all recognize that, and that gentleman said. We've all maybe said things that we shouldn't have said, but to stay here for an extra hour and a half, just to go back and forth and attack this poor woman who's done so much for the district, I mean, I think it's really disgraceful, and I think you really need to reconsider why you're sitting on the board, if this is your motivation and this is your objective.
That was the final speaker. Board member comments? Could we call the vote, please?
I would like to comment before I vote.
Call rolls? Please. Ms. Angley?
I'm voting, even though my vote doesn't count for anything, I'm voting yes if I would want her to resign, and no if I do not want her to resign. I'm asking for clarification. A yes vote means I would want her to resign, and a no vote means I do not want her to resign. Correct? That's what I understand. Okay. No.
Mr. Biancomano?
So, after listening to everybody's opinion, I would like to share mine. I found the comments to be irresponsible. As elected members of the school board, our speech should speak to the inclusiveness that we would like in our district. I'm going to vote yes for her resignation tonight, because an apology for inadvertently releasing the statement does not do, undo, rather, the harm that the statement does. So, yes.
Ms. Delara?
Sure, I just... I just... I wanna address before I vote. As a parent with a childhood special needs, oftentimes I've had parents say things to me about my son and his autism, and say, you know, "Well, he doesn't look autistic," or "He doesn't sound autistic." And I understand that sometimes people, you know, say things, and they could be taken out of context, and I know that these parents don't mean it in a hurtful way. And so, I understand when Mr. DeFusco said yes. I was shocked, because usually, I'm very shocked, and I'm very heartbroken when parents say this about my son. But it is a teachable moment, and that's why I've become such an advocate for children with autism. And I'm really saddened, because, you know, we've had plenty of opportunity for us to all talk about this, or for somebody to talk to, or bring this up to me, and it wasn't until I read the article that I found out that this was happening. Ms. Sobolov, I do not condemn, you know, this kind of, you know, language, absolutely not, but I think that you've done your due diligence, and you reached out to me, and all the emails, and the first thing I said to you was, "Oh, my gosh, please reach out to Mike DeFusco, and please have him understand that this is not what you meant." And that's, you know, and you did that. And he has written, you know, quite a few statements saying how he feels. So, to me, this is just... This is really silly, and it's sad. And I'm really, really sad today that I have to sit here and I have to vote. So, my vote is no.
Ms. Evans?
No.
Mr. Madigan?
Okay. It's fine, everyone wants... If you're friends, like Ms. Danskier said, everything's hunky-dory. You come in, you say this. People come and criticize tonight. People throw around names, board members. And one of the people that were in that piece was a gentleman who comes and criticizes this board, and he was labeled in that piece also. So, when we go in, it's only Mr. DeFusco. No, it's a married man also in that piece. Married man with two children who comes and criticizes every single one of us on this board. So, it was meant to be hurtful, and mean, and bigoted, and it was bullying. Just because we had to... We were texting between two of her friends to be mean and spiteful over their politics, because they don't like the gentleman coming up here and criticizing them, and they don't like Mr. DeFusco, because he might run against the mayor. Even the mayor said this is disgusting and unexcusable. So, with that, I vote yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
I'd like to comment, please. My goal as a board member and former teacher is to solely serve the children of Hoboken staff and support the superintendent, and taking time away from that educational purpose really pains me. I appreciate the apology and accept it. My vote tonight would be the same regardless of the board member, due to the standard we need to present as elected officials and role models for the children of the community. My vote is yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
I wanted to apologize again for the situation, and thank you for the support, for coming out, and for understanding, and abstain.
She didn't say anything. She didn't vote.
Record that as a note, like a non-committal. And Mr. Klopfeld?
Well, I can't rationalize or excuse or downplay the inadvertent text messages that we received, but I have worked with Irene on this board for a number of years, and I feel like I know her well enough to understand and accept her contrite apology on behalf of the board. So, I vote no.
That's four, and a negative, and one abstention. So, it doesn't carry. So, the motion doesn't carry. It's no other business before the board. Our next regular... Our next budget hearing is on May 2nd, followed by the regular meeting and adoption of the budget on May 9th. Is there a motion to close? Motion to close.
Second.